I welcome you all to study session four. We will be looking at fallacies. Fallacies. In this study session, you'll be exposed to the concept of fallacies. The idea of fallacy emphasizes the errors we make in our thinking. It is important to learn about fallacies so that we can avoid committing them or falling into them. It is also important to learn them so that we are able to detect them in the thinking of others. Because this study session should call, consider the concept of fallacies and the major classifications of fallacies. So at the end of this study session, you should be able to define the concept of fallacy, given these two major classifications of fallacies and their variants. Now, what is fallacy? What's the meaning of fallacy? A fallacy can be defined as any form of mistake that is capable of distorting correct reasoning or inference. Any mistake we make in reasoning is considered as a fallacy. It is a term used to refer to anything that is capable of causing an argument to be false, wrong, or invalid. It could be said to be an error in reasoning or argument. And this error invalidates or makes the argument or reasoning unreliable. In summary, fallacies are errors in arguments. Fallacies are errors in arguments. A fallacy may be due to an unacceptable assumption that can cause a fallacy. You assume something that is not. It can also result from an invalid inference from the premises. That is inferring from propositions which are assumed to be true. Another proposition which does not follow from them. A confusion brought about by ambiguous terms or some weaknesses which militates against the logical precision of the argument. Can use ambiguous terms that can make your argument to become fallacious. So these are the different occasions that can put one into committing a fallacy. In the notion, a fallacy is any mistake or error in reasoning or argument. Classification of fallacies. Fallacies are classified under two major types. Formal and informal fallacy or logical and material fallacies. So it's either you call the formal fallacies or logical fallacies. And then the other one, informal fallacy or material fallacies. So those are the two major classifications of fallacies. Now, under each of them, there are different types. We begin with the formal or logical fallacies. Formal or logical fallacies are errors committed in the process of drawing a conclusion from the premises which make the argument invalid. When you draw a conclusion from the premises which make the argument invalid, it becomes a formal or logical fallacy. So a formal or logical fallacy results from error in the form or structure of arguments. The form or structure of an argument. Once there is an error in the form or structure of an argument, especially when conclusion does not follow the conclusion does not follow from the premises. Or maybe the terms used are ambiguous. Or when the assumptions are not valid. This could be considered as formal or logical fallacies. So for this reason, logical or formal fallacies are considered as fallacies of structure or form. Fallacies of structure or form because we have said that this fallacy is committed when there's an error in the structure or the form of the argument. What are the types of formal or logical fallacies? There are many of them. Number one, undistributed middle. Undistributed middle. Here we're talking about a point where the middle term is not distributed. At this point, it is difficult for you to understand what we mean by the distribution of terms. In subsequent sessions, we are going to meet the distribution of terms when it comes to logic and what that means. We will understand that better. So we have here, undistributed middle. That is the middle term is not distributed. Illicit minor, those are examples of a logical argument. Then we have illicit major. We have exclusive premises. Then drawing affirmative conclusion from a negative premise. You understand this better when we look at the, when we go into the topics of going to treat better. And the second major type of fallacy, informal or material fallacy. Informal or material fallacy results from the error on truth embodied in the subject matter of the argument. Rather than in its form. Here, the error on truth embodied in the subject matter of the argument rather than in its form. In the former one, we're talking about the form of the argument. Here, we're talking about the subject matter, that's the content of the argument. It is an error traceable to the matter or material in use in the argument. For this reason, the fallacy is called the fallacy of content rather than structure or form. So informal or material fallacies are classified into three major categories. Namely, fallacies of relevance, fallacies of presumption, and fallacies of ambiguity. Each of these major categories has many types under each. We will be touched briefly. We're going to talk briefly on each of them. Now, we're looking at the fallacies of relevance. When an argument relies on premises that are not relevant to its conclusion and that therefore cannot possibly establish its truth, the fallacy committed is one of what relevance. So when the conclusion you draw from a particular argument relies on the premises that are not relevant to the argument, that argument is, that fallacy is considered as a fallacy of relevance. There are many types of these fallacies of relevance. Number one, argument from ignorance. In Latin, it's argumentum ad ignoransiam. Argumentum ad ignoransiam, so argument from ignorance. This fallacy occurs when it is argued that a proposition is true on the ground that it has not been proved false. Or when it is argued that a proposition is false because it has not been proved true. In other words, the argument from ignorance holds that whenever a statement has not been proved as being false or whenever a statement that is false has not been proved to be true, then it is considered as argument from ignorance. For example, continued belief in the existence of ghosts must be true since opponents of such a belief have not been able to prove that they do not exist. So simply because those who are saying that there are no ghosts have not provided a proof that there are no ghosts. People are saying that most all that ghosts actually exist since there is no objection to it. Or continued belief in the existence of ghosts must be false since defenders of such a belief have not been able to prove that they do exist. Because those who believe that ghosts exist have not provided any concrete proof to show that they exist. Then, there is no point to believe that ghosts actually exist. When you argue like this, you are arguing from ignorance. And we call that in Latin, argumentum ad ignoransiam. The next one is appeal to inappropriate authority. Appeal to inappropriate authority. That's the second type of fallacy of relevance. Argumentum ad vericondiam. That is the Latin version. Argumentum ad vericondiam. In this kind of fallacy, a person appears to an authority for testimony on a subject outside of the authority's area of specialization. So when you are talking about a particular subject that you are not an authority in, as if you are an authority in that area, you are committing a fallacy of argumentum ad vericondiam. Example, Professor Garba has said that democracy is the best form of government for Nigeria. Professor Garba is a renowned figure in physics. Therefore, it must be true that democracy is the best form of government for Nigeria. Professor Garba is not a, an expert in politics. In political science, or so to say. So for you, to absorb what he has said concerning an area that is, he has no expertise in, to be true, simply because he's a professor, is to appeal to an inappropriate authority. If someone that is in political science tries to say something concerning what is happening in physics and you accept it, it is the same fallacy because that is not this area of expertise. The area of expertise is political science, so to speak. So if he says something within political science, at least it's understandable that this is area of expertise. But for him to go and say something in physics where he has no expertise in, and you accept it, you are already falling into or being a victim of the fallacy of appealing to an inappropriate authority. That is what it means. The third one is argument against a person. Argument against a person, that is argumentum ad homina. This fallacy occurs when an attack is levelled not at the claims being made or the merits of the argument, but at the person of the opponent. Two persons may be arguing over a particular thing. Instead of focusing on that particular thing, the person begins to focus on the personality of the person whom he is arguing with. That is you're attacking this person instead of attacking the issue of her. Now, there are three forms of this fallacy, namely abusive, circumstantial, or too cocky. The first one, abusive type of argumentum ad homina. This variety attacks the character of our opponent or his or our supposed defects instead of disproving the truth of what is said. For example, I do not understand people, I do not understand what people see in Mr. Ephion's book. He is very proud and has been divorced three times. What have all those reasons got to do with Mr. Ephion's book? Instead of talking about the fact that Ephion's book does not really address the subject it claims to. The person is attacking his own person considering him has been proud and then making reference to the fact that they have divorced three times. What have all those things got to do with the content of the book that Mr. Ephion has written? So if you argue by that, you are guilty of what we call that abusive type of fallacy of argumentum ad homina. There is also the circumstantial type of argumentum ad homina. In this form of fallacy, an individual provides reasons why his opponent should accept the conclusion. Instead of advancing reasons which prove the conclusion to be true. In other words, one's opponent's circumstances should make him or her accept a conclusion to be true. An example is shown in the conversation below. For instance, the clergyman will say, I do not think that public schools should be returned to mission as of old. The honorable minister will say, but you are a clergyman and your religious vocation requires that you give full support to the bill for the handover of our schools to missions. So what we see in this argument is that the minister fears that because the clergyman is the one in, because it is the religious institution that is involved, the clergyman that belongs to the religious institution should support it even though the proposal is not correct. If you incline to that type of argument, you are guilty of the fallacy of argumentum ad homina for the circumstantial type of fallacy of argumentum ad homina. The third one is too cocky, you also or you are another. This variety of fallacy arises when someone accuses of wrongdoing responds to the charge by accusing the user or accuser of wrongdoing. So someone accuses you and you accuse the person back. That is the fallacy we call too cocky. Look at this example. The land where children die, meaning Israel is, is, the land where children die, meaning Israel is a misleading headline. Isn't Bosnia where hundreds of children have been slaughtered the land where children die? Or Germany where children are killed by xenophobic skinheads? So you are accused and you accuse the person accusing you. In that type of situation, the fallacy is considered as too cocky. They will have appeal to emotion, argumentum ad popular. This is a fallacy where careful reasoning is replaced with devices calculated to elicit enthusiasm and emotional support for the conclusion advanced. This fallacy is common among advertisers and politicians. Let us look at one example. All the people in Latvia have noted me to be trustworthy and are voting for me. So Acuanga people do not be left out in the race. Yeah? He's trying to make Acuanga people fear that Latvia people have trusted him and are voting for him. And so Acuanga people should not feel to vote for him, they should also vote for him. That is appeal to emotion, argumentum ad popular. Then we have appeal to pity, argumentum ad misericordia. Argumentum ad misericordia. In this fallacy, careful reasoning is replaced by devices calculated to elicit sympathy on the part of the hearer for the objects of the speaker's concern. Here, you appeal to pity, you appeal to sympathy. Look at one example. Fellow interviewers, let us give the consultant position, the consultant position to Philip. After all, he has eight children to feed and clothe and a terminally ill wife and aged mother. Be careful. What have, what have all those things got to do with the position that the people are looking for? So instead of looking, focusing on the issue at hand, you are begging that people sympathize with the person involved. It is the same thing that happens when someone, maybe someone is charged for maybe stealing. Now, instead of focusing on what the person has done, you begin to beg the judges. You know, this person is poor, or this person does not have, this person lost his family member a few days ago, because of that, they should dismiss him altogether. That is appeal to sympathy. It is also a type of fallacy. Also have appeal to force, argumentum ad popular. Argumentum ad popular. This fallacy occurs when careful reasoning is replaced with direct or disnated threats to bring about the acceptance of some conclusion. It is designed to compare the other party to accept the conclusion based on the fear of the consequences of not doing so. Here, you force someone to accept the conclusion of an argument using threats. You're threatening the person to accept your position. Not necessarily that the position is the right one. But because you wield more power than the person, you compel the person to accept your conclusion, your, your, your position. Let us look at this example. The conversation between a managing director and one Mr. Pumpkin. The managing director says, I called you to inform me that you are to give my cousin an appointment later tomorrow morning. Then, Mr. Pumpkin replies, sir, there is no vacancy right now to accommodate your cousin. Now, here what the managing director said, you will do as I tell you because if you do not, I will address a letter to you, I swear. You will beg for your present position, but you know I'm there. So this is threat. There isn't threat to make the person to accept your particular position. So we call that appeal to force, argumentum ad popular. The next one is irrelevant conclusion. Ignoratio elenque. Ignoratio elenque. In this fallacy, a connection is established between two items when no such connection exists. The premises miss the point of purporting to support one conclusion while in fact supporting or establishing another. No correlation between two things, but you try to jam them together, to force them to be together. If you do this type of thing, you are guilty of the fallacy called irrelevant conclusion because the conclusion does not derive from the premises. There's no correlation. It cannot be drawn from the premises because there is no relationship between them. The second type of informal material fallacy, the fallacies of presumption. These are fallacies that arise from reliance upon some proposition that is assumed to be true. But it's in fact false or dubious or without warrants. There are five types of these fallacies. Number one, complex question. This is when a question is asked in such a way as to propose the truth of some assumption buried in that question. The complex question presents to be straightforward, but it is not. Any direct answer to such a question commits one to the admission of certain faults. Yes, this is an example of a complex question. Maybe you are looking for a pen. You do not know who took the pen and you want to find out about the pen. Then you come and see somebody. Then, when you see the person, instead of asking the person whether the person saw the pen, you just move straight to asking the person, but why did you carry that pen? You have already assumed that the person carried the pen. So the one that is not careful can easily begin to explain even though you are not even sure that it's a person that took the pen. That could be used to, 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 to catch a thief, to catch a thief. By using those type of complex question, someone that is guilty can easily begin to give answers even when it's not too clear that the person asking is aware that he or she is the one that is guilty of that particular thing. So when you do that, we call that complex question and it's also a fallacy. You have falsely presumed that the person did that when improved the person before. It depends on the circumstance. The second one is false cause. In this fallacy, one treats as the cause of a thing what is not really the cause of that thing. Or marginally, one blunders in reasoning that is based on causal relations. In other words, one presumes that a causal link exists between two items when none actually does. This fallacy takes two forms, non-causa pro causa and post hoc, ego propter hoc. Those are the two types of this fallacy of false cause. You try to establish a connection between two things, a link between two things when such a link does not exist at all. So there are two types, the non-causa pro causa. What does it mean? This states that one event A is the cause of another event B where A is not actually the cause. You are not sure, you just say A is the cause on B. Superstitious beliefs are guilty of this type of fallacy. It is not a surprise, example, it is not a surprise that his house caught fire today since I saw a black cat run around the house. Simply because you saw a black cat run around the house doesn't guarantee the fact of the house being set ablaze. So for you to say that because a cat went around the house, it is responsible for the fire outbreak in the house is trying to connect two things that have no correlation. So that is a fallacy we call non-causa pro causa. Then the next one, the second one, which is post hoc, ego propter hoc. In this fallacy, it is assumed that because a state of affairs A precedes another state of affair B in time, such priority necessarily makes A the cause of B. Because this thing happened this time and the other one, another one followed. Ah, it means one must be responsible for the other. That is what this particular one is saying. Let's hear an example. As soon as we increased Abraham's monthly allowance at school, his grades began to drop. We shall send him less money from now on. Having extra money makes him lazy. You sent, because you have, they increased his money and unfortunately for him, he didn't perform well in the exams. You now linked the fact that they gave him money with his reduced performance rate in examinations. This is a connection that a champion may not necessarily go. But because one has preceded the other, the person is feeling that it is because of that that the second thing is happening. And that is why it is called fallacy of post hoc ego propter hoc. The next side is begging the question, petitio principi. Begging the question, petitio principi. This fallacy occurs when one assumes in the premises of an argument the truth of what one seeks to establish in the conclusion of that argument. It occurs when the conclusion repeats what is in the premise without saying something new. Example, introduction to philosophy, logic, and human resistance is composed with all Nigerian university students. Therefore, all Nigerian university students offer introduction to philosophy, logic, and human resistance. The same thing, they're always repeating the same thing. When you do that, we call that argument begging the question, petitio principi. The next one is accident. In this fallacy, it is argued that what is true or applicable as a general rule must be true or applicable in some special situation. In other words, one applies a generalization to an individual case that it does not properly govern. Example, since sugar is good for the body, it must be good for Orok who is diabetic. Hmm, sugar may be good for the body, but Orok's body system may not, may not accept sugar because of what he is passing through. A diabetic patient is not supposed to take in more sugar. But this does not disprove the fact that sugar is good for the body. So for you to argue that since sugar is good for the body, it's only good for Orok who is diabetic, that is the fallacy of accident. That's a fallacy of accident. The next one is converse accident. This is also considered the fallacy of hasty generalization. Here, one moves carelessly or too quickly from a single case to an endlessly broad generalization. Example, all Nigerians, all Nigerians are crooked. One of your big men took our foreign minister of $500,000. That one person did a thing does not mean that every other person that belongs to that same category will do the same thing. It was just a single Nigerian that did that. So it is not enough for you to say, all Nigerians are the same. So when you do that, we call that a fallacy of hasty generalization or converse accident. Now, the third category of informal or material fallacy is what we call fallacies of ambiguity. Fallacies of ambiguity and mistaken arguments formulated in such a way as to rely on shifts in the meaning of words or phrases from their use in the premises to their use in the conclusion. These fallacies fall under five types as follows. Here, we're talking about words that have many meanings. And you are using those words within the same arguments with different meanings. You will be confusing those who are listening to you because the meaning you have at one point may not be the same meaning you have at the other point. And the person may be thinking, that is the meaning. And that is why we consider it a fallacy of ambiguity. Now, the different types of fallacies of ambiguity. Number one, fallacy of equivocation. Equivocation. This fallacy results from the use of the same word or phrase with two or more meanings deliberately or accidentally in the same formulation of an argument. Fallacy of equivocation. Example, politics is a dirty game, avoid partisan politics. Politics is a dirty game, avoid partisan politics. The meaning attached to politics in the first part of the sentence is different from the one in the second one. Number two, amphibolyte. Amphibolyte. In this fallacy, one of the statements in an argument has more than one possible meaning because of the loose or awkward way in which the words in the statement have been combined. The combination of the words is awkward and because of that, you have more than one possible meaning. Example, while on the phone- Example, while on the phone with a friend and you say, come again. Two meanings can arise from that as either to come physically or to repeat what was said. When you use mixed sentences, you are guilty of the fallacy of amphibolyte. It will also have the fallacy of accent. This fallacy occurs when a shift of meaning arises within, within an argument as a consequence of changes in the emphasis given to its words of parts. The fallacy occurs when a shift of meaning arises within an argument as a consequence of changes in the emphasis given to its words of parts. So the change in emphasis. Example, this is an unhealthy situation. In the statement, the speaker may be expressing a prevailing problem around. However, some listeners may misunderstand the use of unhealthy to mean the situation or environment is not held as a free. So the change is a meaning. The next one is fallacy of composition. This fallacy is committed when one reasons mistakenly from the attributes of a part to the attributes of a whole or from the attributes of an individual member of some collection to the attributes of the totality of the collection. It is from part to whole from an individual to the entire group. John, a Nigerian, is a warrior. Therefore, all Nigerians are warriors. See, the fact that John is a warrior and is a Nigerian does not imply that every Nigerian is a warrior. When you argue by that, we call that the fallacy of composition. Then the next one and the last one, fallacy of division. In this fallacy, one reasons mistakenly from the attributes of a whole to the attributes of one of its parts or from the attribute of the totality of some collection of entities to the attributes of the individual entities within that collection. It is the opposite of composition. In composition, we're talking about reasoning from part to whole or from individual to the entire collection. Here, we're saying we're reasoning from the whole to the part or from the totality or from the collection of the whole to the individual entities. Example, all Nigerians are power trump. Agbo is a Nigerian leader. Therefore, Agbo is power trump. Because all Nigerians are power trump and Agbo is a Nigerian, does not mean that Agbo is a power trump. So when you argue like that, we call that fallacy of division. Now, that is it about fallacies. In this study session, we have learnt that a fallacy is an error in thinking. We have also learnt that there are two major classifications of fallacy, namely formal logical fallacy and informal material fallacy. We've also seen that formal fallacies are errors committed in the process of drawing the conclusion from the premises, which make the argument invalid. And they're considered them as fallacies of form or structure. We have mentioned that there are five types of the fallacy. Then an informal fallacy results from error on truth embodied in the subject matter of the argument rather than in its form. That is the fallacy of content. Thank you very much for listening. See you in the next.